Well, we will get started here. Good evening and welcome to the Dairy Cooperative School Board meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. Please join me to stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions, we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, Nick is remote this evening. And is Michelle with us, Dr. Dancy? Not yet, okay, I believe she will be. The rest of us are here and present. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have both non-public and public from the November 10th meeting. We have public from the November 12th, as well as public from November 16th. I'll take a motion on those.
Take a motion to approve all four mentioned minutes, Chair.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes have passed. We will go to Mr. Farley for a Pinkerton update.
So there's not a whole lot to report this week. Pinkerton is still completely, fully remote. But they are going to reassess before the holiday break on the 23rd about whether we're going back to a hybrid model after, after break. Last month, there were over two dozen cases in the Pinkerton remote community. But there was little transmission, little contact, and there was contact tracing for everyone who was on campus. Because people have been on campus if they have an IEP or 504 plan. Teachers have been on campus even though students have been remote. And certain clubs are meeting on campus with limits so that students can keep being involved in extracurriculars. And, and that's about it. So we're hoping that we can, we can get back to a hybrid as soon as possible when it's safe to do so.
Thank you. Any questions for Pinkerton? Thank you for the update. Already moving on, we have, Mary Ann has the next couple pieces here for us.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Had a lot of conversations with Dr. Powers, almost daily. You don't have a lot to report, but I've had a lot of conversations, ongoing. So tonight, I would like to look at number three in the context of number four, if that's okay with the board.
That's okay.
Mr. Anderson?
You're good.
All right, good. So in looking at number three, in the context of number four, that'll be embedded into my recommendation with number four. And my recommendation for number four will be expanded on once we begin to go through the COVID-19 update, of which we have Dr. Chris Peterson here, who's a member of our pandemic response team, a member of our community health team. And he's our consulting physician for our district. Basically, Dr. Peterson and I speak just about on a daily basis. He probably gets tired of doing so. We also have Susan Linehan, our nurse team leader, zooming in. Dr. Dancy, do you have her zooming in? Okay, perfect. So, Dr. Peterson, do you want to approach the table? Thank you. Nice one, I can tell them what to do. Not often I can do that. So, we've put together, actually Lisa Long, I owe her a lot of credit, so Lisa, our math coach, helps with all the data. And Susan Linehan has really provided most of the data here, so thank you, Susan. In fact, most of it, if not all of it. Chuck Hemian has provided the last slide of data. And Chuck is our emergency director of medical services. Again, this is a real collaborative effort. I go back in time, way back to our July and August conversations, those being such that every, really every move we've made is collaborative in nature, as you know. It's not a solo move, it's a collaborative move. It's a continuous conversation, continuous reflection, and then back to continuous conversation. Not based on one point of data, not based on one person's opinion, not grounded in opinion, grounded in science, grounded in data. And that's where we are today. And that's what I want to preface. You know, the students are at the center of what we do, student and staff safety at all times. That's certainly our concern. The pandemic has, has thrown a lot of twists and turns into our original plans. That being said, that is why I'm making the recommendation I am making tonight. For one, it's consistency of instruction for our students. That namely is number one. And number two is, I know a lot of disruption has occurred, sometimes on a daily basis for students and families, and certainly our staff, when either individual students are quarantined, an entire class is quarantined, and sometimes a school is shut down for a day, two days, three days, and sometimes more than a week. We know that's unanticipated, we know that causes hardships. For that, I'm sorry. However, it's out of our control. And I know that families know that. Sometimes we all receive, you know, negative feedback about that, yet, and I think in the bigger contextual picture of our world, once you step back, you understand that that is what we have to deal with on a daily basis. I think everyone has really made a heroic effort to be in the onsite, face-to-face learning since August. I think every one of our staff, our teachers, everyone has done, have done a magnificent job. Our custodians, I can go on, I will in my superintendent's support, to be where we are today. I'm proud. And I know our students are proud, our families are proud, I think our board's proud. In fact, I know you are. And I'm certainly proud. And we will continue our quest to provide, you know, face-to-face instruction when we can, when we believe that the data says that it is, it is time to return to whatever instructional model that's appropriate for our students. So, Dr. Peterson, would you like to begin the data presentation?
Would love to, thank you. Cliff, number two, thanks. So, there's some, some slides, and these are pretty self-evident slides. There's not a, this isn't, this isn't tough to, stuff to figure out. In October, we were at 327 for negative COVID tests for students, the students that were going out getting tested and coming back negative. And we saw a three, a three-time increase, each month going up by about 300. And so as of yesterday, we had 970 tests that were negative for students. So 970 students that were tested, that may have been that a student was tested more than once, but we had 970 tests that were negative. I think probably more importantly, this next slide really shows kind of what we've seen from a positive COVID rate in, in the schools. And to start off, this does not mean that transmission is happening in the schools. We've seen, we've seen the news, there are a number of cases, they continue to increase rapidly. And although there is a five-fold increase in the last month, we're seeing the same parallel numbers in the community. Just, just for reference, at the peak of our, of the pandemic in the spring, we had 128 people in hospitals across the state. And so those obviously were the sickest of people with, with COVID. Today, we have over 200 people in hospitals with COVID. So, we're exponentially over what we were seeing in the spring as far as cases are concerned. Parkland currently has 19 cases in their, in our hospital. So just from a community standpoint, we're seeing a large impact. Parkland saw the most cases of the state locally with COVID. So, it, the numbers that we're seeing, it's imperative for us to understand that it isn't something that we're doing in the school, it's something that's going on in the community, and we're seeing that translate into the school. In fact, it's the Herculean efforts of the teachers, the staff, that have kept the numbers low in school and kept it so that we're not seeing massive spread of COVID in the schools. It's just not what's happening. You guys are working super hard, and it's showing, based on the numbers, that we only have 48 positives. And those were positives that were in contact outside of the school and then came into the school. So it's this community pressure that we're seeing on the schools. We had been following numbers from DHHS, we talked about this at the last meeting, those numbers were kind of made-up numbers, if you will, in that they were just trying to find benchmarks. But I think we're at a community spot now where we're seeing enough pressure, that that pressure is not impacting necessarily in-school transmission, but it is impacting staff. It's impacting what we can do to keep kids in school and keep them safe. The days of, you know, a teacher is not in, we'll, we'll go to a second plan and have classes combined, obviously, we can't do that at this point. So if a teacher doesn't come in, that impact on the staff is enormous, and that's really what's driving us as far as decisions that we're making at a school level. I don't expect MAC to understand ribosomal activity in, in the endoplasmic reticulum. She doesn't expect me to understand staffing in and out, but I think we both have some understanding of each other's roles, and I can speak to the fact that staffing is being affected quite a bit. Slide number four, just, just a slide of how many people, again, it's just increasing people that have opted not to for one reason or the other, to be tested. The next slide, slide five, I, I think the big piece here for me is the fact that we're doing a good job of identifying who's around kids, and we're removing those kids from the school, the staff from the school in order to quarantine at home, which as we, many of you know, was 14 days and now has been cut down to 10 days by CDC and DHHS. The backstory to this, and one that I didn't really have my arms around at the beginning of all this, because I didn't know this was going to happen, but DHHS does not have the infrastructure to do contact tracing. All 439 of those kids were contact traced by our school nurses and the staff. And so if anybody wants to say something nice, it should be to those folks, because they worked hard. Administrators in school buildings at seven, eight o'clock at night, making phone calls, trying to do the contacts, tracings, because the state was not supporting that. That was all district done. That was your school nurses, your school administrators, that were doing all of that work, an enormous effort in order to keep that. Again, that's a pinch point, as we see more and more communities, activity, more and more community spread, and we're having kids come in that are then needing to have quarantines of their classmates based on, on contact within a classroom, and then those needing to be contact traced. It's an enormous burden on the school nurses, and there's only so much you can expect humans to do. And I think that's the secondary pinch point. Again, one that I didn't recognize could have come along, but it's here. And, and fatigue, staff fatigue is certainly a part of what's going on for us right now. Our students are, are safe. We wouldn't be here, we wouldn't have students in school if we didn't feel like they were safe. But we're certainly moving to a place where I think we need to look at the data, where we, I think we need to understand that the community squeeze, the community impact is only going to increase as we move forward, and we need to make choices based on what, how we're teaching kids, based on that information. Total percentage of students absent, that's 17.2%, so our, our number is 15, but that 17.2 does include quarantine students. So we're below the 15 if we take out the quarantine student number. Remembering back to those matrices, squares, it, one of the squares was that having an absentee rate greater than 15 pushed us into a remote option. But again, this is 17.2, including the quarantine students.
Chris, I think we really need to point out that 17.2% because that's the rate based on 12-7, is really only with five of our eight schools operational at this point.
Correct, right, yep.
And why I say five of the eight is because three are non-operational at this point.
Correct.
Yeah, they're operational, but they're not in, they're not onsite learning.
Right.
So they're operational, but they're not onsite learning.
And one of the elementary schools is all, is remote.
Right, Dairy Village and both of our middle schools are operational, but they're not onsite. So that takes out a large part of our population, yet the percentage has really increased, you know, when we look at the level of school impact. So I think that's really important. So you're not really comparing apples to apples, but that's a really, really important factor for the community to understand.
And then that last slide, number seven, comes from Chuck. And, you know, the numbers are, are there, we're at 427 per 100,000. These are numbers from today. New cases, 580 cases in the county. About a third of those are dairy. One-third of that number is dairy new cases. Hospitalization rate, our PCR rate, again, that's above what we had gotten for numbers at DHHS, their numbers had been about 5%, and we're now up at 9%. We went past those numbers knowing that we were not seeing a lot of impact from a staffing standpoint, and knowing that we weren't seeing transmission within the schools. So this was planned on our part, we knew that we were going past it, we had tacit approval from DHHS to do that. But now I think we're in a place where we need to kind of relook at where we are. And I think importantly, as we think about the future, knowing where these landmarks are right now, so that we can use this data as we move forward to make choices in the future. And then of course, dairy positive tests, or dairy PCR tests at 18 with antigen test, test right, right around 900. Currently, we have 65 cases in dairy that are active. It's actually down a little bit, 75 was the number previous, which is about three or four days ago. And that number goes up and down, just as we take people off the list, and as people go onto that list, it continues to fluctuate, but a little bit, little bit lower than it was in the past. I didn't put anybody to sleep, good for me. Questions?
Would Sue Linehan like to zoom in and, and say anything? I'm, I'm sure you have lots to add, Sue.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll, thanks, Mary Ann, I'll give a couple of extra comments. And as Chris did say, first of all, the teachers and the staff should certainly be praised for the work to have been able to stay in this long, and should be commended for their unwavering effort in keeping the kids safe. But as Chris said, you know, the community spread evidenced by 9% positivity rate within the community. And the numbers that we're seeing on our chart, the last two weeks have been really quite significant. Since we've come back on Monday, just to reiterate that, since we came back on Monday, the 30th, we have been notified of 20, on the chart, we've been notified of 28 positive cases associated with our schools since Monday, the 30th. And as of today, we were notified of four more cases. I want the public and the board to understand that this involves immediate action when we get a positive case, because unfortunately, as Chris mentioned, as, as good as a partner DHH has been, and they have been a good partner, because they are overwhelmed themselves, and when the community spread gets to be this dramatic, they have to cut down on who they actually follow up with contact tracing. So, their inability to do that really puts a huge burden on us. Coupled with testing, testing seems in the last few weeks and through the holiday to have been, number one, less accessible, less rapid testing for symptomatic kids, and the turnaround time for testing does, at, at times is prolonged, three, four, five, six days to get a PCR test back. So that means when we get the test back in schools, potentially, kids and staff who have been exposed, have been there, have been in school for a few days, so we want to act rapidly. So when we get, like today, four positive tests in one day, it's all hands on deck. We need to dismiss children, and we need to do that. So, today was just an example of how the community spread is really affecting the safety of our schools, and it creeping in. And we, I think it's time that, you know, this is not sustainable. It's not sustainable to keep this up in, in the weeks to come when we know it's predicted by all the other people on the pandemic team, that it's only going to get worse in the next coming week. So we do think, as hard as it is to say, that it is time to pause the in-person learning and see, see where we're going with it. As you know, that the conditions that we're seeing right now aren't normal in any way, and for kids, families, staff, these abrupt switchings and closing, switching back and forth, they're going to be closed for two days and all of that, is not beneficial to anyone during these high-risk times. And, and trying to figure out who's supposed to be in and who's supposed to be out, and when quarantines end, it's really, at this point, too much to manage with full-in-person, full-in-person classes. Let's see, I just, you know, as you know, and from the numbers, it's not only the kids who have tested positive, it's the kids who are in isolation because they are in positive, or they've had a close contact within their home, and the kids that are quarantined because of close contacts, either at school or at home. So, you know, we'll look ahead, we'll look ahead to how we can bring kids back safely when administration and the team and everybody decides that, but at this time, it really is time, time to pause. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board members?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank both Dr. Peterson and Sue Linehan and all the nurses for the vast amount of work they're clearly doing, along with all the teachers and principals, to be in touch with parents, be in touch with kids, try to keep as much consistency as possible, and allow them to be in school until they have been.
Thank you. I can't claim much of the work, I have to say, that's all this, that's the nursing staff, but agreed, Herculean job that they're doing there.
It really, I just, a comment on that, it is something that wasn't expected also at the beginning of this, in the answering or commenting on that, is that we spend a monumental time, amount of time educating families and on the phone for, because it's hard to explain the difference between isolation and quarantine, and, and the people and the parents, and even the staff that don't live and breathe it every day, need a lot of education and guidance and support through these times. And so, that was something that was not expected, and we have one nurse in each building, which we thank, we thank you for every minute of every day that Derry's lucky enough to have that. But nurses also, you know, get sick or have family issues or whatever, and, and can't, and we have no, there is, just like the hospitals and the long-term healthcare facilities, there's no nurses to take our place. We have a rare sub that can sub on a very rare time when they might have a day off themselves, so, often scrambling, and not only to deal with all of the pandemic stuff, but to deal with taking care of the kids who are in the schools. So, we're really strained from a nursing standpoint, staffing point, too.
All right, well, thank you very much for the update and that information.
You're very welcome. Take care, guys, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for all your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all the annoying calls that you take.
They're not annoying.
That's what you say, now.
If you were asking for money, they'd be annoying, but...
Yeah, I don't ask for money. No, I don't ask you, anyway. And Sue, thank you for all your time and all the calls that you take continuously, seven days a week. It's more than appreciated by our entire community. So, thank you both. Chris, thank you for being here. Laura, thanks you too.
She thanks you for having me out of the house.
That's what she says all the time.
I think you guys are in cahoots sometimes.
That's where the money is.
Yeah, right.
Just so you know. All right, let's get to, now, I would like to make my recommendation? All right, so, again, thank you all around, but I will say my, rest of my thank yous and accolades in my superintendent's report. So at this time, I am recommending that all kindergarten through grade eight schools in the Derry School District will be in remote, in full-remote instructional model Plan C, effective Monday, December 14th through January 15th, 2021. Preschool, DEEP students will move to the full-remote instructional model, effective Monday, December 14th through December 23rd. As of today, the DEEP students' anticipated return to onsite face-to-face instruction will be January 4th, 2021. While in Plan C, small groups or individual students may participate onsite in schools as permitted by health and safety guidelines. And early January 2021, area COVID metrics and other relevant information will be analyzed to assess the need to remain in Plan C, full-remote learning, or the possibility of shifting to a different instructional model. After the district leadership team consults with district pandemic response team and healthcare members from the district community leaders task force, I will communicate the administration's decision to the board. And then, implement the decision. Unless there is an objection from the board with this process, the superintendent will make future decisions on shifting between instructional and delivery plans for the remainder of the pandemic. As a result of this recommendation, there is no need for a change to the 2020, 2021 Dairy Cooperative School District calendar at this time. While I believe that the school board has previously delegated the authority to shift between instructional models during the pandemic to the superintendent, to be certain, I would appreciate the board moving and voting to support my recommendation.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Derek, I'll make a motion to support it. I think that, well, do you want me to wait till a second to say anything? I just think that we've made, well, we, I'll just say we, because it's we, but it's really all of you, have made a lot of really good decisions with the help of the pandemic team, and made decisions to do what's right for our students and our staff, with the best of your ability. So I'm willing to support this and watch as we move forward, and obviously keep us informed, but I think that's the best, best thing to do at this point, after listening to Chris and Sue as well, so.
Motion for Brenner.
I'll, I'll give a second there.
Second, my line. Discussion?
I think that you guys should be commended, the schools, the staff, the administration, from top to bottom, we have done more than I ever thought that we could in here. The students being able to wear their masks appropriately, follow all the rules and regulations that we put in, I think that this went as longer than anyone even anticipated coming in. And I support you completely on going into Plan C right now, but I'm a little confused as to the vote. I, I appreciate you asking for it, but we didn't vote on the middle schools, and moving forward, she's going to make any decisions, so I'm just confused why this particular one needs a vote.
I think this is a fairly sizable shift in the paradigm, and I think this is her way of just requesting if we're, we're still backing their efforts. I think that's understandable to be, to wonder, we, the middle schools were kind of an urgent matter at the time, DVS was an urgent matter at the time, the rest, we thought, you know, we could give the other elementary schools a little more time and let the parents plan for possible daycare needs and everything, and not go out Monday. And, and I certainly understand, we've, I think we've given the authority and we've given the backing, but I think it's kind of just a doubling down and saying, listen, we, we understand, this is, this is the shift we were fearing since... this is, this is the shift we were fearing since July. We made it this far, which is amazing. We all thought it was middle October, but for the amazing efforts of the teachers and the nurses and the admin and the parents at home, following all the guidelines, you know, I think it's, it's okay for us to, to go ahead and say, yeah, we, we're, we're still backing you. This is the time to do it. I think the public would probably feel better if we were all on board with that. So that's my feeling, anyway. You can certainly have your own with that.
Should we put in the motion that we are also agreeing that she, what she had said about being able to make any of the decisions moving forward in January so that she doesn't have to come back for a vote? Like is that, should that be part of the motion going in?
I believe her statement was a motion.
I kind of feel like that's what was, I, I mean, I think, honestly, I feel like this is a kind of a reinstatement or a re...
Clarification.
Re-clarification or, you know, redo your vows kind of thing that we did in the, in the, in the fall. I don't even, I was going to say spring, but I don't mean spring. The motion that was made then to, you know, to allow Marion and the administrative staff to make the decision. So I, I feel like it's kind of like a renewal kind of thing. And it's, I think it's also good because it's December. We didn't expect to be here. In March, we didn't expect, we expected to be in school by June. We didn't, you know, and we didn't expect this at all. So it's a constantly, obviously, the same words all the time, constantly evolving. But it's good for the public to know. We've had a lot of home sell, maybe parents aren't aware of what happened in this, in the fall, keep saying the spring. So now they'll know, they'll have, they'll have this information and, you know, just, I guess reaffirms that we trust them all to make the decisions, the right decisions.
I think to, to even re-clarify, if I may, at this point, I'd like to re-clarify, this is the decision-making process that will be used to make future shifts between instructional and delivery plans, and I certainly ask that this be noted in the minutes. Certainly can be confident that I will continue to communicate with the board and families and keep them updated and informed, just as I have been on a regular basis. That is why I would, you know, appreciate the support and the vote because this is the decision-making process that I'm saying would be, will be used throughout the pandemic. That being duly noted, that's why the vote would be appreciated.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just echo a little bit. This is just a formality that the board authorized the administration to make their decisions and bring them forward to us. The formality is just looking for our approval or our input, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that, that the superintendent understands our support and that we've given her license, the admin, to make the decisions and certainly reflect them back to the board in the opposition, in any opportunity that we may have to ask questions of it. So I, that's the way I've captioned it. I think the verbiage that's been presented certainly fits the, the idea of what we're doing here, so I'm certainly in backing of it.
Okay, I will do a roll call vote. Nick, are you still out there?
I'm a yes.
Yes for Nick. Brenda?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Is Michelle with us at this time? Not yet, okay. Chair votes yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. I will follow up with a letter to families tomorrow. Actually, I'll read it tonight and we'll send out tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, I believe next up we have the school transition draft plan.
Okay, so my talk is focusing mainly on the eight days from December, Monday, December 14th through Wednesday, December 23rd, which is now when we will have all K through eight fully remote. And we know that the middle school went out at the beginning of trimester two and unified arts teachers from the middle school began with students from the ARLP, the Alternative Remote Learning Plan. So they've begun, they've made that transition, I should say, right from the start of the trimester. The thought process instructionally is, that's beneficial for those teachers to begin remote with the students that they've had and the students who know them and they know the students and the rules and regs and so forth because getting used to that full-remote again after being face-to-face for the whole trimester now will give elementary that same opportunity a shorter period of time, but still they'll have eight days from Monday the 14th through Wednesday, the 23rd to develop their shtick fully remote with those elementary kids that they have had all along. So the Alternative Remote Learning Plan, as we've talked about from the beginning, was something that once we go fully remote is going to be dissolved and the long-term substitutes will be released. All teachers will be back in their home school and will be, all of the students will return to their home school as well. Little, little more history, in the beginning of this whole process, way back when, we heard a tremendous amount of talk about the need for the connection to the home school and they didn't want to lose, there was some concern that, you know, the preference would have been to have everybody from that home school being taught by teachers from that home school. But you got to remember, we also talked about things like the potential of needing to cross grade levels where a teacher might have to do second grade and third grade at the same time, or third grade and fourth grade. I'm very happy to say we did not have to do that. We spent some more money for some more people, long-term substitutes. Of course, we were not able to provide a remote teacher from the home school for every child, and I think that's what we're running into right now. Now I'm hearing, you know, in the beginning, I listened at this, in this room, to some negative comments about the ARLP in general and back in my office about some of the teachers and so forth, some of whom, many of whom I've heard the complete opposite and positive comments as well. Once again, that idea that no matter how hard we try, no matter what we do, no matter what efforts we put in, we understand we're never going to please everybody. But I am very thankful to all of the Alternative Remote Learning Plan teachers and administrat, and assistants and staff members, special ed teachers and so forth, related service providers that have done a, an exceptional job in a very difficult situation. And it is pleasing to hear, I'm getting phone calls now, of very positive comments and the fantastic relationships that many of our teachers have built with students and those concerns of the parents of the loss of that relationship because it might be a long-term sub who will no longer be with us, or it just might be that the teacher is going back to a different school from the home school of the, of the child. But we have to remember there are financial implications. I'm not afraid to say that. A lot of the job of the school board, and we're going through it right now with the fiscal advisory committee and the budget and trying to keep the taxes down as much as possible. These do have impact. Staffing, I've mentioned it numerous times, the staffing impact. I do have one of our long-term subs leaving for the military. Good luck to him and thank you ahead of time for his service. And I have one person who notified me that they are interviewing. Don't know where that will go. I have replaced three teachers in that program so far. I think you've heard me say here, sometimes it's been a gift. Somebody listened to the school board meeting, couple of school board meetings ago, happened to be changing careers, had three masters of education courses under their belt, was looking for the level that we had an opening at and was looking for the exact subject level, subject that we were looking for. So sometimes the stars all line up. I'm a little nervous now of the need to replace the person for January 19th, if that went forward. But we do what we have to do. I tell parents when they tell me about the relationship that's been built up, I, I make them aware that this is all well and good, but every one of those long-term subs has a right to continue to apply for a full-time position with full-time benefits and a long-term goal for themselves. And at any time, I can get, luckily I've had two-week notices and I appreciate that from the people that have left, I could get notice that, that teacher that's been doing such a great job for us in the ARLP and we thank them and we congratulate them for their new position and they move on and we look to replace them. There are transitions, I understand that. Transitions, as I've said in the past, like change, change is hard. We talk about relationships. I believe that the teachers in the Derry Cooperative School District first and foremost build excellent relationships with the students. And although it has taken some of these students, so I hear from the parents, and I, I agree that some kids transition easier than others, I do believe that this transition process that we put into place will assist and these teachers will go out of their way to make every student that comes into their classroom feel welcome, not only for them, but with the other students that are in the class. So I'm going to have Cliff or Dr. Minko put up the slide. We're going to talk first about, this is the middle and elementary school transition. We're going to start, talk about middle school first. You'll see some replication with elementary, but of course, as I've said, since Monday the 30th, middle school has been teaching remote. Next week, starting on Monday, the middle school core subject department teams will be meeting with the ARLP, the Alternative Remote Learning Plan, teachers and teams of teachers, and they will be discussing curriculum specifically, curriculum paths, where they are along the continuum. We do have pacing guides that we work with for our curriculum, but just like within the schools themselves, we're going to have some students, some teachers who maybe not quite as up to where some of the teachers are in face-to-face. And I know for sure that we will have some Alternative Remote Learning Plan teachers who are a little bit further beyond where the teachers are face-to-face. Teachers in, in schools have been dealing with a lot of extra things going on in their day, too. So that's the first process that's going to happen. And then by the end of the week of the 14th, the Alternative Remote Learning Plan teachers will be completing an information form on every single one of their students, which they will communicate to the receiving teachers who are on our staff, and some of them are going to be right with them, teaching remotely, others will be in the face and face, the face-to-face environment. So there's going to be a curriculum sharing, and then there's going to be specific information about each student that will be shared. The week of, the last week in December, the three-day week, meet the team event, you know, we, we likened it to a move-up day at the end of school in June, but of course, it's not necessarily a move-up day. But the idea behind this would be we would give time for all of the Alternative Remote Learning Plan students to go to Google Classroom and a Zoom with their teacher from the home Now, at the middle school level, because it's a team approach, we have three teams, six, seven, and eight. And of course, there's teachers from West Running Brook and Gilbert H. Hood at all three grade levels, so. And at each school, there are two teams. So there is a good chance that a student in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan, whether they are at Gilbert H. Hood or West Running Brook, will have one or more of the teachers that they have now. There is a definite chance they will not have all of them because we don't have any of the teams that have all teachers from one school level. And then as of January 4th, all students will be with their whole school, their home school teams and will begin attending home school remote classes for the full day, beginning with their advisory. If we move to elementary, it's a lot of the same thing. So as of next Monday, when they begin remote instruction with the face-to-face students that we have now, and we talked about discontinuing the Alternative Remote Learning Plan as soon as we moved to Plan C, what we wanted to do, but we also talked about that transition process that I'm giving you here that we think is so important. So we have these eight days to perform this transition process so that the teachers will get comfortable with the curriculum, will get comfortable with the students that are coming in, and the students will get comfortable with the classroom and with their new teacher. So the home school teachers, they will be transitioning their ro, remote instruction by the end of next week. As with middle school, the Alternative Remote Learning Plan teachers from the elementary school will be filling out and communicating those information sheets to the teachers on the, the home school teachers about each student. And part of, again, part of that remote instruction will be that meetings regarding the curriculum and so forth between the teachers. Again, that three-day week, the week of 12, 21, 2, 3, we will have that meet-the-teacher situation for the elementary school kids. And now at the elementary school level, people need to understand that if their child happens to be with, let's just say it's a child from, a student from Barca, and they have at that particular grade level a Barca elementary school teacher, I never say everything is 100%, but the, most likely, from what I've heard so far in our conversations with the principals, those students will be staying with their current teacher. As long as we don't have a situation where the other teachers... As long as we don't have a situation where the other teachers on that grade level in that school would then go over school board maximum classroom sizes, which I, as of yet, I don't believe there is a situation that that would occur, there is a good chance that those students would transition back with that teacher from Barca and would move forward with that teacher. There are gonna be some situations in some of the schools where the numbers in the classrooms, although they don't go over the school board recommendation, they may be uneven, and then as kids move in and so forth, they will even those out over time. But there's gonna be other situations, of course. Some teachers have two different, kids from two different schools, there are some teachers that have kids from three different schools, and those students would be dispersed out to the home school teachers from their specific home school. And part of that meet the teacher is an invite into the Google Classroom as well as some time on Zoom, so they can see the other kids in their classroom. And then, beginning just like with middle school, all students as of January 4th, when we return from the December vacation, will begin Plan C full remote instruction. And so, pre-K through grade five schools will transition to full remote learning, beginning Monday the 14th, at which time, complete remote instruction Plan C will begin for all. To allow for the transition, for, the Alternative Remote Learning Plan will continue through December, and the last day for the Alternative Remote Learning Plan will be December 23rd of 2020, the last day of school prior to the December vacation. And as the superintendent indicated, the district will continue to monitor circumstances and update families and talk about whether or not this is gonna continue, or there is gonna be a shift again in instructional models, and that will come about according to what was discussed earlier from people like Dr. Peterson, Sue Linehan, and so forth. Questions?
School board have questions? Brenda?
So just to clarify, after having, spending a lot of time to you talking, talking about this with you today, students that are currently in their elementary school, currently in, with a teacher in their school, the expectation, assuming-
Most likely, yep.
I was trying to think of how to caveat that. Assuming that numbers aren't crazy-
Yep.
-they will be, remain with that teacher.
Yes. Let me just elaborate.
Yep.
Principals from the, the five elementary schools have discussed with their grade-level teams, and they worked that out, and the face-to-face teachers have been on board with, yeah, we have our kids here, we're okay with that, it's okay if this person has 12 and this person has 16, it will work itself out over time, and they felt it was, it made sense to leave it that way, rather than moving two kids from here or two kids from there if they didn't have to because of the numbers.
And I'm, I'm sure that the teachers feel the same way as, you know, like you said, they are concerned about their students as well. Just one other question that I thought of, and it's probably not, I'm thinking of in school and not remote, but if there is a class that has a larger number of students and they need some support, is it possible to have an assistant working with them in a remote setting? And I know that that takes a lot of direction, but it may alleviate some, if somebody has a large classroom, because I know some of our upper grades have larger numbers, and considering it's a transition, would it be possible to have assistants, and I don't even know if it'll work, but I'm just asking, if needed?
I do know that we've done that both in the, we do have four remote assistants that are working in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan, and we expect to have them, they are our, our employees, and we expect to have them continue working remotely because of their situations. And we have had situations that Mary Ann can probably talk to a little bit better than I, but we had at least one or a couple of situations where we took a larger classroom face-to-face and added an assistant, two?
Speak on it?
Yeah.
Okay. I know you did.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like Chris Peterson, you just-
Right.
So, no comment. So, I, you know, I think Austin addressed the remote situation. However, the larger class sizes, I know, right now, we have two, like almost double classrooms right now, one at South Range and one at Derry Village-
Right.
-of which the class sizes do exceed, by a couple anyway, of students, so they exceed the school board goals, however, the class sizes are larger and we have, we have an assistant in those classrooms, so, but, you know, but that being said, the class, the classroom capacity is much larger, because it's a double classroom.
And I know when we've been in person, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Did you have something else to say?
Well, I was, I was gonna say something else.
You can go right then.
Okay, I'll go back and say something. I just wanted to, I guess, address the disparity of class sizes, I think, and that has been addressed by our principals, so there will, there may be a distinct disparity in class sizes in some schools. And that being said, that is to avoid, that will be to avoid some movement of students who have been with their classroom teacher for this year. So there, there may be in a couple of schools, I know in at least one in one particular grade level I'm thinking of, a disparity that's quite noticeable, and that has been already addressed and agreed to by that administrative team with their grade-level teachers. So someone might look at, you know, a piece of paper and say, wow, that is quite a disparity, but those have been acknowledged and that team is okay with that, so. And, and that also preserves the integrity of that class, so that they don't, that students don't have to shift at any time. And we didn't really know when that shift would occur, or if it would occur, but in that case, that, I think that kind of alludes to the response to your question. Keep going.
Well, and even prior, well, prior to COVID, COVID, even, we had some school, some grade levels who had different class sizes, some smaller, some larger, for a variety of reasons, right? The class makeup, or if people moved, or whatever, but mostly it was addressing students' needs, and I forgot my other question, but that's okay. I'll think of it.
It'll come back.
I'll come back to you. Jess?
Do the current teachers have anticipated class lists of the name of their students, or is that gonna wait until after they've had the teacher-to-teacher interaction with the ARLP?
Yeah, the, the principals at, at the, the administrators at each school level has had discussions with, at the middle school level, they all know what kids are gonna be on. Again, a lot of it was done prior to the return to school. If you remember, we talked about it, the thought process then was, we would give every, 100% of the kids, a classroom teacher or a team at middle school of teachers and so forth and so on. There may be a few changes for various reasons, requests or whatever, but for the most part, now what the, the principal, once they knew that there was a possibility of, of this transition, they've been talking to the teachers at their schools. The teams of teachers know who's gonna be in each classroom and so forth, the grade levels, I mean, and of course, the teams at, at the middle schools.
Because to go on that, I mentioned something back in October, that this was the plan all along, and we talk about the connection that these kids have, and they want that with their home school. And if these lists already exist, why haven't they reached out to the students to kind of alleviate this? This is a great plan going forth now, but I wish that these students who are gonna have difficulty with this transition had some sort of thing to look forward to. A lot of these students don't even know who they're gonna get, so the teachers have a generalized list, but these students don't. And I think that if we wanted to keep that connection over the last trimester, reaching out, telling these kids that, you know, even if it was just the team of those teachers at the school, that eventually we're gonna see you, you know, coming through, I think that might have alleviated this transition coming in, maybe made it a little bit easier over the next few weeks.
So I think the main emphasis that, that we were looking for, and I believe the schools did a fantastic job on, was keeping the home school in general connected to the students in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan, reach-outs and so forth. That could, you know, hindsight is 2020, I guess, but I also, it could also be a great deal of confusion. And what if that didn't end up being the case because of numbers, because we had move-ins and this and that, and you've been expecting that you're gonna go to Ms. Willis's class and you end up in Mr. Foley's class? Not that you wouldn't love that, of course, but you would miss Ms. Willis, but I guess, so many of these things, it's hard, you know, we, we've tried as best as we could to look forward and so forth, and, you know, that's something that, you know, maybe it could have been maybe a grade level that way, whereas, and something for us to think about down the road, that that way, if they ended up with, they were supposed to have teacher A and they ended up with teacher B, well, the, the three teachers from that team were reaching out and just letting them know. So, you know, that might have been a safer way to take a look at that, and it's a good point. We're definitely not gonna hit it all, that's for sure.
And I get that. I think that you've put a lot of thought into how we're gonna transition, I do appreciate that. One of the, the questions I do have is on the backend, when we do have to switch back out of Plan C, and we have that criteria up there, that if the community transmission level is not at whatever the green, mild, whatever that is called, then the families have the option of remaining in remote. Do we have a plan of how, of who the teachers are, what this plan is gonna be? Is it, you know, is it gonna be another transition to different teachers? Is it gonna be the same teacher? Do we have a plan moving forward for that, or is that still in process?
All of our plans, I would say, are in process. I think Mary Ann stresses, we can't predict, but we can plan, and she's been hammering that with us, rightfully so. At, for instance, hybrid, we had a middle school hybrid meeting yesterday, we had an elementary hybrid meeting today. We are working on looking at synchronous versus asynchronous. We do have a meeting Thursday with the DEA rep leadership, we do have a mediation next Wednesday, it's gonna be dealing with the impact bargaining that we've been going through and so forth, and we're, both sides are hoping that we'll get some answers. Again, I don't know how long it takes mediators to make decisions and things, I don't know if we get answers that day or down the road, hopefully not too far down the road. The thought process behind this now is that, the hope is that these students will stay with their home school teacher for the rest of the year, no matter what we're doing. And, you know, a lot of that, I'll lay it right out here, depends on synchronous learning for that to happen, and we're hoping that, we are working with the union and working with teachers on the committees to try to see how we can make that work for students as well as staff. But yeah, it is definitely an ongoing process, and the hope now is that they will be with their home school, they will be with this one teacher unless they move out of district.
So, so I think that's a really good question, and, and we don't have all the definitive answers, as, as you know. I wish we did, you know, I really wish we did. I think it's an excellent question. So plans are evolving, right? So for, I think the first step was tonight, in, in getting, you know, definitive answers from the board and moving on from tonight. And, and I think you know us well, and, and we're very genuine in what we do, we don't hide things, that's, that's not in our character. So we'll move on, and we'll start, like tomorrow, generating ideas, you know, generating new ideas based off your questions and based off concerns and so forth. And although in my proposal or in my comment tonight, I said, you know, January 2021, yes, we'll start examining the more relevant data and the more relevant statistics. It's not without planning between now and then, because there really is no break, as we know, because there can't be, when we have students at the center of what we do. So I think that, that may ease some anxiety out there, and I know there is a lot of it, and there's a lot of it with us too. So.
Brenda, did you? Not yet? Okay. I, I, to follow up on the last question a little bit, as far as rehoming or what, what we would call it, I received a lot of emails just regarding that bond with the teacher, and I think some of your discussion helped calm some of my anxiety with that. Although, the one interesting question I got was about a student that was, is in school, or will be out of school soon, but in school learning. At the beginning of the year, they were supposed to have teacher A, that teacher went remote, so they got teacher B. Will they stay with B now, or they will, they go back to the original teacher that was assigned to them?
Most likely, they will stay, if, if, so, in other words, it's the same home school, because they would have been with that teacher anyways, most likely, they will stay with the teacher that they have now, unless there's a numbers issue. We're not looking to cause more transitions if we don't have to. We do understand people's angst when it comes to transitions and so forth. So the overall answer, without, you know, knowing specifics, would be no. That T, that child would stay with the teacher that they have now, and every child that has that remote teacher that's in that home school would stay with that. The only ones that most likely would not stay with that teacher is if they were at a different home school.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Erica, do you have any? Lynn? Good. Nick? Nothing? Okay.
Yes, I'm on board.
Okay. So if there's no other board discussion, I think maybe we have some folks here that would like to address the board on this topic. So just to remind folks of the protocol is, just give your name and address before you speak. You have three minutes, so there's a good amount of people, so if we wanna have everyone speak, wanna make sure to kinda keep it brief. And the, the topic, for this agenda item is the transitions, we wanna keep the discussion to that topic, so if anyone would like to come up to speak towards this topic now, please come up to the podium.
Okay, I'll go first. My name is Elizabeth Stowell. I live at Sixth Fairway Drive, right across the street. My son, Aiden, is a first grader at Derry Village. The first thing I do wanna say is, I do understand that what you guys do every day, I cannot even imagine the amount of mental hoop jumping you guys have to do, along with the teachers. My son's teachers are golden. His kindergarten teacher, I thought, was amazing, his remote teacher is even better, I wanna take her home and keep her. My concern is, actually, I believe, lady over there, I can't read them from here, so I don't really see what the name is, I apologize. She mentioned it already, I believe, Mr. Dr. Garofalo, did I say that right? Okay. I already had a conversation with him about it, because it literally sent me into a panic. My son, and I'm sure he's not, I'm not the only one, there are other children in my son's classroom specifically, that as soon as Ms. Brennan goes away, we're gonna have another two months of these children not wanting to behave, not wanting to sit in front of Zoom please, class meetings, or even speak to the teacher in a Zoom meeting? My son's gonna go bonkers, literally off the walls. I mean, it, it's going to be September and October all over again. My concern is this, as she pointed out, whereas, and the letters, I apologize, I'm over the place, the letters are kind of not quite simple English to me, so I have to understand them in a different way, depending on how I read it. But she mentioned that the concern was if we transition once, and then we transition again, my concern is, is my seventh year gonna have a third teacher before his seventh birthday? That's my biggest concern, because if that happens, I'm literally in for spring remote learning of last year all over again, which was nothing but a constant- learning of last year all over again, which was nothing but a constant fight between my son and I for three months long. I just, I don't, my, that's my concern, because I don't see the benefit of a child having three, three teachers in a, less than a six-month period, not even a full school year. You know, I, I understand the transition is necessary. I mean, I'm also slightly confused in that, from what I'm understanding, we're running out of teachers, but we're getting rid of teachers. That doesn't, it's not adding up in my head. I know he's tried to explain it to me at least three times. I kind of get it, and then I get to, if we're losing teachers, why are we now getting rid of the ones we have? If we've already got ones at the school that are leaving, we have others that are at, with the remote kids, and we're almost getting rid of them. But we need teachers, so why are we getting rid of them? I don't understand that. I mean, I just, it seems a little confusing, and it's, I don't know how to phrase this without sounding insulting, I don't mean to, but it's from my perspective, it almost seems like the way this is planned out, it's meant to benefit the students that already walk in the building every day, not the ones that have been at home since September. It almost seems like that's the main port, that's the main goal, is to benefit the students that walked into Dairy Village, or East Dairy, or the other elementary schools, or the other middle schools first. Benefit them first, and we'll get to the remote students later. That doesn't seem quite fair when I, my understanding is that the point of a school board and administrators is to benefit all of the students, whether you're in a classroom or your classroom is your living room.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
The best way I can explain it is pre-pandemic or no pandemic, we have teachers who we've gone through human resources and advertised for, and we've interviewed through a, through a pretty stringent process, and they've gone through a great, and I'm not going to talk about any of our long-term subs. You know, I know you picked out one, which is great, and thank you. It's great to hear positive things about the teachers and the long-term subs and so forth. But again, I go back to, we were allowed due to, and the reason we needed teachers was because we added more than we normally would have to have the Alternative Remote Learning Plan and the face-to-face, both at the same time. Because a lot of the class sizes and a lot of the, to spread the people out and so forth, they were a little bit smaller, and therefore we needed, you know, we created three middle school teams above and beyond the six that we have at each school already anyhow. So, and we were allowed to hire people with a bachelor's degree. For instance, and I'm not saying this is, this is great, an engineer teaching math, makes sense, right? A journalist teaching ELA, makes sense. But the teachers that we went through the process and vetted out, they went to school, they got teaching degrees, they understand more about what it, and it's great that someone like Mrs. Brennan is making those relationships. And because that's the thing that the superintendent has stressed, we all stress first and foremost, you got to make relationships with the kids, because the kids are going to learn better from somebody they like. And I'll stress it again, I do believe that our teachers, in getting your children, your child, your children, whomever, they are going to love that child, they are going to work on those relationships, they are going to bend over backwards, do backflips and sow cows to make sure that they make a connection with your child and work with you as well. What's the best way, you know? You are very good about reaching out, and you do it in a good way, and I do appreciate the conversations we've had. And so we do understand that, that's why we created this transition plan, and we do know that those teachers are going to make it work to the best of their ability.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Grant Gifford, 27 Olson Road, and I really do appreciate a lot of the planning and replanning and how many times we have to keep going back with the new information that we find along the way. I'm actually very happy to hear already conversations about what it looks like to transition again after this, because that is inevitably something we're going to have to look at. And not to be the kind of person who tries to create more stir, but we do only have two weeks of school between this transition starting and when we reach January. January feels like a very long way away, but it really isn't a whole lot of time. So we do want to make sure we understand what we're planning on doing. We may not know when it'll be, but we can spend a lot of time trying to figure out what it'll look like and what it is that we're looking for to know when the transition does happen. And I don't know how we can possibly create a dialogue that moves a little bit faster than the school board meetings. We do, we don't have these quite often enough as fast as details change. So if there's a way we can get a communication going to talk about that, I appreciate knowing where it is and how it works. So if that could be passed along, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's excellent input, and, you know, part of the recommendation tonight was, it's really embedded in the reopening plan. And I kind of articulated it before, is to make those decisions about the instructional switches, the instructional methodology switches, you know, based on the results of our, and the conversations of our pandemic team and our community leaders who are health experts. So getting that information out to you in between is really important. So thank you for that input.
Anybody else? All right. Any further discussion by school board members? Erica?
I just want to thank every one of you that came to listen tonight, whether you asked a question or you just came. I say this often, but I can't say it enough, that being knowledgeable, being involved, coming and asking questions is vital to us as a board, making the best decisions, because we need to know what you're thinking, what concerns you, what you want to hear. So I really appreciate everyone being here, and I want to stress that the decision made tonight to switch instructional models had nothing to do with homeschool, remote school, remote students versus home students. It simply was a matter of, we were running numerous models at a time, it was a financial strain to run it, and now that everyone's going to be remote, we, we needed a plan that could serve everyone remotely, cost-effectively, because the way grant monies work, most of the monies we have available would end this year. So come next year, we needed a new plan. So we wanted to make sure that since we had to make a change, we made a change that gave you time to understand what the change was, why we were making it, and what would happen next, instead of just snap, making a change, and suddenly saying you don't have a choice. So I, I want to stress that there was a lot of thought put into things, nothing's perfect, but I feel like the administration did a good job and did their best to plan and share and explain. And if people have questions, they could certainly follow up, but I appreciate every one of you that came, and we care about each and one of your kids very much.
Okay, we will entertain a motion?
I'm not sure what, what we want for a motion. Do you want, you want a motion to?
Let's see that it says action required, so do we need a?
So just, just a clarification, so this part of what the school district is going to be doing is not part of what we've already made a motion for?
Yeah, I would think it's covered.
I just want to be sure. I, I.
I know that they, the motion they created was kind of last minute, so it may have superseded the agenda that came out earlier, so I think, I think we're okay with that.
I, I think you're okay, because I think it's embedded in the other motion, I don't know.
I'm comfortable with that, that's, I just, I.
Supports the instructional methodology.
Okay.
Well, is everybody comfortable with that, though? Not taking a formal vote, just, we've heard it and we agree with it? I just, I'm just going to take one minute to say thank you. I'm going to get choked up, because I spent a lot of time talking to Austin today, because I do care about everybody's kids. I look at every, all of your children like mine, sorry. And I put your kids in that seat where my kids were a long time ago, and my grandchildren will be in another year, actually. So it is, it's really, really hard to make these decisions that we never thought we were going to be making. It's, and there's a constant change when, when the governor makes a decision, when the federal government makes a decision, when DHHS makes a decision, there's a constant change for our people who are making decisions. So, like I said, I really appreciated all the time you took with me today, because I did feel better, knowing that a good number of children are going to stay with the person they've been with since September, because I think that's important. I also feel very good about the plan that the children who are going to make a transition will have the opportunity to make some connections and transition before it happens, and there's still the ability to have conversations with building administrators, teachers, whoever it needs, needs to be, to make those children feel comfortable and cared about and learning. So I'm going to stop, because I can't hold it together. I just really appreciate it, and I really, people think I don't care about their kids, but I absolutely do.
I, first of all, you're welcome. Most people can't wait for me to shut my mouth, but, you know, I appreciate the fact that you, that you're willing to talk to, and, and we all love talking about this. We are passionate about it. We do have arguments, we have, within the school, the leadership amongst ourselves, where we talk about this and we have differences of opinion and we work through things. And, you know, I appreciate the time that you took in listening and hearing the different things that we talked about, and as we do with all the people that come up here and come to the mic, whether it's, you know, a negative thing that, you know, sometimes you don't like to hear, but you listen to it, and you say, you know what, there was some good points there, and we've got to think about this. And I think we've, as we've gone along, we've made our changes. And I do want to send a thank you out to all of the school board members, including Nick Remote and Michelle, who I don't believe is with us tonight, for, we know how much you guys support this town and support what we do, and we appreciate it, too. So, thank you.
I just want everyone to know that this is one of those decisions that is never taken lightly, that is very difficult. My daughter is one of those ones who's losing all four of her core teachers and is going to be transitioning, you know? And I think that social, emotional health, it's going to take a toll. But I also see the other side of this table. I see the budget that we're under. I see that this is a program that it can't go on the way it is right now. I also saw, like today is an example, one of her teachers going so far above and beyond what is needed. I believe that the teachers in this district will do the best for all of these kids. I trust her future teachers to do everything for her, and I trust them to do it for your kids, I really do. So I do support this decision.
Thank you, and thanks everyone for coming. I reiterate that from Erica. It's important to get feedback, and we, we really do listen to what you have to say. All right, without going on any further, we'll head to the next agenda item, which is polling locations for the March 9th, 2021 voting day.
It's a hard one to follow up on. All right. So Town Administrator Dave Karen, Jane Samard, and I had a Zoom meeting about a week and a half ago about polling on March 9th, and the location of Calvary is not available for March 9th. So basically, the town would like to hold polling in one location rather than two this year. And so based on the recommendation of Chief Garone, because of traffic flow, because we discussed that, and then Chief Garone's, good night, Dr. Peterson, thank you. Based on the recommendation of Chief Garone because of traffic flow, and that really was the, the ultimate decision-maker. West Runny Brook will be used with the board's, certainly not approval, but just so you know, and acknowledgement, if you have any issue with that, please let me know. On March 9th for polling, that being said, we will certainly not have students in the building that day. So that will need to be, and we'll get this information out certainly in, you know, plenty of time, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows we'll have a remote learning day for both middle schools that day, because we really try, it is in everyone's best interest to do things as, as closely as possible in both, for both middle schools. We've really tried to pair in equity as much as possible with both middle schools, who would have a remote learning day for both middle schools that day. That's the last thing people want to hear, I know. However, you know, with the pandemic ongoing, it is in the best interest of students for them not to be here that day for safety purposes. So in essence, the town will even hire a cleaning company for us through, you know, through their expenses, or a custodian, we have to have a custodian on, certainly. But the town will encumber the expense of a cleaning company. Masks are mandated to come in the building, and we talked through that. They'll have a tent outside, just really mimicking the conditions that they had at Pinkerton Academy in the elections in November. So, you know, we work with Dave extremely well. Dave Karen is certainly in our community task force with, and has been since the summer, and we speak with Dave a lot. So I just wanted you to have an update on that, and ahead of time, so that doesn't get thrown on you. And Dave was going to go back to the town council, and we will collaborate and continue to collaborate with Dave Karen from there.
Thank you. Any questions by the board? All right. Mary Ann, you may continue with the superintendent's update.
All right. They're all left, so they don't hear their accolades, but maybe they'll hear it over TV. I, too, you know, Austin's gone, too. Thank him for his great presentation tonight, and decisions are never easy. However, all, all students are taken into account, certainly faced, our students who are currently in our face-to-face, and also all students who are remote, and some have, you know, gone from face-to-face or onsite to remote, and some have come from remote to onsite. So with that being said, our students are the most important resource that we have. But without them, you know, we aren't here, and, and that's why we are here. That's the purpose, students are the purpose of our work each and every day. We know that's why you're here as board members, and that's why we're here. So I think everybody knows that. It's good to be reminded, and decisions are never easy. Sometimes we, we think we were making a decision, and then it, you know, that decision has to change based on conditions that we've never encountered before. And I believe you as families are kind of in that same situation, maybe in a smaller scale level, and maybe in a different situation than we are, too. Certainly in a different situation for different factors, yet I think everyone has experienced in some facet or another, being a personal situation, a larger family situation, or in this entire school situation, or school district situation, of, of having to, to face situations that we've never before faced, and we will continue to face those circumstances, be it on a smaller scale or a larger scale. But please know that everything is done with our students' safety first and foremost, and certainly we consider our staff's safety as, too. And first and foremost, for without our staff, we are unable to serve our students' needs. So I'm getting to the final budget meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, December 14th, here at West Runny Brook at 6:30. I see one of our fiscal advisory committee members here tonight, Mr. Kling. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, beginning at 6 o'clock, and deliberative sessions scheduled for Saturday, February 6th. School and town elections, I just spoke of, take place, are scheduled to take place on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. I was able to visit several schools last Friday, including South Raines, Dairy Village, and Ernest P. Barca. Certainly, it's always a wonderful and great experience to be able to see students and staff in the learning environment, and a reminder for the reason that we have worked so diligently to have students engage in onsite learning this year. I will be visiting Grinnell and East Dairy in the next few days. I will be visiting Grinnell and East Derry in the next few days and we're very grateful for every teacher and the entire school district staff for their incredible commitment to our students and families. Our gratitude is also extended to our students and families for their continued hard work, their kindness and your patience as we continue to work through these turbulent times. Um, I certainly want to acknowledge at this time our school district nurse team leader, Ms. Susan Linehan, and she's our South Range school nurse too, for all they've done during this global pandemic. I'd like to recognize each school nurse Susan spoke and alluded to, and so did Dr. Peterson, their really incredible work. They're early, they stay late and our, our teachers do too. I've seen, you know, their extraordinary efforts on behalf of the nurses and, and we've been short nurses and I think that was probably skipped over a little bit tonight. We have had a nursing shortage in our district by which some of the administrators have even been covering for a few hours at a time. And, um, even though we've, you know, and, and agencies are short of nurses too, and as you know, healthcare has, has a shortage in particular. So I'd like to recognize each nurse at this time, Ms. Colleen Clardy from Derry Village, Ms. Jen Drum from Deep, Ms. Kate Murphy from East Derry, Ms. Kathy Moplis from Ernest P. Barca, Ms. Lori Fleming from Gilbert H. Hood, Mrs. Lisa O'Brien de Persio from Grinnell, and Mrs. Linehan from South Range and Ms. Laura Walker, West Running Brook. Some of our nurses have been working one day in three different schools. If you remember, and it seems long ago, it really wasn't, when, um, we had to shift to remote learning for our middle schools to use the resources which we did have in order to maintain and keep the elementaries open for as long as we have. And that was including our resources for nurses. So at one point, it was last week, we had one nurse work in three different elementary schools in one day. So that is the kind of resource shifting that we have done and, and been able to sustain keeping elementary schools open. So that has been successful. Um, it certainly has taken aware and, and on our school nursing staff in particular. Certainly our nurses have gone above and beyond in their diligence and with incredibly long hours to keep our schools safe and open every day. I appreciate all of the hard work they've done and have the utmost respect and admiration for each of our school nurses. They're certainly a credit to the nursing profession and our education profession, profession in general. We are grateful for who they are. Our custodial staff, our maintenance teams and our food service departments are to be commended and recognized for their dedication to student, staff and families. They are certainly undoubtedly tremendous teams and without them, our schools would have been unable to remain clean and sanitized. And with our food service staff, our students and families are extremely well-fed with our fantastic lunch program and, um, talk about great efforts. Our custodians at minutes notice have to deep clean a school within a night, they have to deep clean classrooms within a, within a night, um, with, you know, very little notice and, and sometimes very, very short staff, which are becoming short staffs in our custodial staff too. That was not mentioned tonight as well. And, you know, at, at times, obviously, the frequently used spaces and the highly touched areas are deep cleaned every night, but oftentimes when you, you get, receive, or the recipients of those letters that I send out and the principals send out, depending on which school, that requires a deep clean of certain classrooms and certain affected areas as well as the deep clean that's done in the, in the, um, highly touched areas and the frequently used spaces at night. And our custodians and maintenance teams are the ones that do that and can't say enough about our food service. And finally, I really want to acknowledge our administrators. They're really the, the silent partners in all this and, um, certainly they continue to work all hours, including weekends, to provide the safest and most optimal learning conditions possible for students and staff. So I want to take the time tonight to not only recognize, but also thank our administrative team for their selflessness and their incredible dedication to the Derry Cooperative School District. I am extremely proud to work with such a proficient, caring, kind and collaborative team of administrators. And, um, I think it's, it's not often enough that I say thank you to the administrative team publicly. They, oftentimes they don't like to be thanked publicly, but, um, you know, and, um, I think it's highly important that the administrators and the administrative team, of which I am lucky to lead, um, is thanked publicly this evening. So thank you guys.
Mary Ann, can I just ask a quick question? As of now, what is the plan for the deliberative session? We often will get around 100 people. Can we hold that in person?
We're, we're working on it. It's a good question.
Okay. I just thought people would wonder that, so I wondered.
That's a good question. We're working on it. Yeah, we have a couple of alternatives, so, but it's, the plan isn't finished yet, so. Hmm, heated tents.
Bring a shovel.
Heated, heated tents. Not really heated tents, I was only kidding. So, um, a legislative subcommittee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow evening, December 9th, at the Derry Municipal Center, beginning at 6:30. I know some of our school board members, Jane Samard and I are looking forward to collaborating with the town council and legislators. This is a reminder for families that kindergarten pre-registration, if you have a child born between October 1st, 2015 and September 30th, 2016, can register your child online for the 2021, 2022 kindergarten class. Kind of unbelievable to say that. Please check for details regarding kindergarten registration. You can check on our district website or our school, individual school websites. And we certainly look forward to welcoming our new kindergarten students who will join us next August. And as previously discussed earlier this evening, students in pre-kindergarten through grade eight will be engaged in Plan C, complete remote learning, beginning on Monday, December 14th. We, we also, and I'm very quick to recognize it, three of our schools are already in remote learning now that will be complete remote learning. Um, in early January, 2021, area COVID metrics and other relevant information will be analyzed, as I had said before, to assess the need to remain in Plan C, full remote learning or the possibility of shifting to a different instructional model. If you are in need of childcare during remote learning for your child, the Derry Boys and Girls Club has some spots available. If interested, you may call them at 434-6695. Another one of our really collaborative partners is the Derry Boys and Girls Club. Art McLean and I speak often. He's the director of the Derry Boys and Girls Club and he and I spoke as late as this afternoon. So, um, I know they do have openings. The holiday break will officially begin on Thursday, December 24th, 2020 and extends to Friday, January 1st, 2021 and remote learning will resume on Monday, January 4th. So on behalf of the entire leadership team, I wish our students, families and staff, our community and our school board, a wonderful holiday season and a happy new year. I believe we reflect on 2020 as being a year with unanticipated and enormous challenges, yet one filled with gratitude for a community that together supported one another during these most difficult times. Despite differences at times, we share the unequivocal commonality that each student is our focus and our efforts are centered around them. Children, regardless of their age, always give us a reason to believe that the future will be better. Thank you.
Any questions for Mary Ann? Well, Mary Ann, you're always the first to selflessly recognize your team members, so I want to recognize your work because your dedication, you walk the walk and your team follows you. So, uh, you've been an amazing leader throughout this pandemic and I think this district is in a better place with, with your efforts. So thank you very much. Jane has an East Derry Memorial Elementary School water update.
Okay, I know Jeremy did talk about this at the, one of our fiscal, um, budget meetings and, um, because it was going to be a, a budget consideration, but it's something that we're looking at if we need to do it this year. We did put notices out at East Derry and, um, there are new requirements regarding PFA, PFASs, if there are any in the water. And you have to have a, not exceed a certain amount. And right now, on various months, we've been one point over the recommended guideline, but they take an average and we have one more sample to do, which may, um, put us under the, um, recommended amount. So Jeremy has been working with the Department of Environmental Services. He's been working with Second Wind Water Systems. He's been working with Granite State Analytical. So, um, they are working, they've actually been out at the school, they're working on a plan to bring forward to, um, see if they, if the board or if we want to do something to mitigate it, if it does come in over the recommended amount that we should have. So as soon as they come back with their recommendation, we'll bring that forward to you. And that's something that could, um, start while, um, while students are in school. If students were to return in January and the project didn't start till then, that can all be going on while students are still in school. It's the same company, Second Wind, that we used, um, that we have a filtration system already over there at East Derry. So it would just be a continuation of service with that company and, um, they acted quickly. Jeremy works with Granite State Analytical all the time. They handle all of our testing for all of our water and, um, they let us know when all of our samples are due and testing. So he's really taking the lead on this and both of those companies, um, really acted very quickly for us because we wanted to make sure that if there were any issues that we needed to address, that we would get right on that. So right now, we're not mandated to do anything, but he wants to make sure that he's a step ahead of it, so.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? All right, moving right into the business administrator.
Uh, Mary Ann mentioned, um, our food service. I'd just like to talk about that for a minute. As you know, we have transitioned at the middle school level to, um, going back to our curbside model that we did in the spring and part of the summer. So we are serving meals on Mondays and Wednesdays at Gilbert H. Hood and West Running Brook. At Gilbert H. Hood, you would drive around the building and go to the back of the building, door number 16. And here at West Running Brook, you just pull up to the main office. You don't have to preorder your meal, you just pull up and they will come out to your car and take your order. We have, we still are offering several different options for lunch. Because we're only going to be serving two days a week, on Mondays, each child would get two breakfasts and two lunches. And on Wednesdays, they would get three breakfasts and three lunch. So for every child in your home, again, it's for any child up to age 19. So, um, Pinkerton students can drive through and get a meal. You don't need to have your children in your car. I know that in the spring, that was one of the requirements when the, when we first started getting this USDA funding, there were a lot more restrictions. And now it's just you have to count the meals, you don't have to have the children in the vehicle. And I know that that's been a big help for parents that, you know, and some of these, they've had these bad weather days, they don't want to have to pack up their kids and come out to get the meals. So I think they've found that very helpful. Yesterday, they actually had a really good day yesterday, so I think that it's starting to pick up. And in the beginning, people thought that it was only if you were low income that you could come and get a meal. But it's not, there's no income base for participating in this program. It's just like in the spring, any child can come regardless of income. And, um, it's actually the way that, it's the only revenue source right now for our food service program. So for every meal that is given to a child, that's how we are, um, we receive money from the USDA for that meal and that breakfast. So, um, we really would love the support of the families in, in town if they would come, want to come through, get a, a really good, delicious and nutritious meal from our program. The ladies would love to have you coming through there. And it will also financially continue to support our food service program to get us through this difficult year. Yesterday, Gilbert H. Hood served 130 students. West Running Brook served 230 students. So since each of those children received two lunch and two breakfasts, we served 1,440 bags of meals yesterday, which is a lot of food and they are doing a lot of prep in the kitchen. They start making them the day before they're going to do the serving so that they're, they're partially ready and, um, can go out on Mondays and Wednesdays. Up until now, the elementary schools have been eating in their own homeschool. And the students who have been coming into Weston Hood, we've still been serving them and that will continue if any students are in the building. We will still make sure that they have food sent over if, if any of them come into the elementary school. And same thing at the middle school. If any students are here, we'll serve them. I think right now our hours are 2:15 to 4:00 and I think, um, we may, uh, start serving a little bit earlier. And the reason why we picked 2:15 is because I know that students are on their normal scheduled day, so we didn't think that parents would come out midday. But if those times don't work for parents, they can certainly call and we'll, we had somebody today called and, and they brought the meal out for them. So if it doesn't work for you on those hours, we're, we'll happy to make accommodations for people. But, um, I just really want to thank Susan Baroskis and her leadership in continuing this program. It's been a lot of work for them and they really enjoy what they're doing. And, um, so I just want to make sure I thank them that working really hard, putting the food out. I also wanted to, uh, talk about maintenance and custodians. Mary Ann talked about how the custodians at a moment's notice, they are, we transitioned from their normal nightly cleaning, which has become more robust because they are cleaning and disinfecting. But we get the calls and, you know, we've, we hate to say it, but we sort of got this down to a, we're, we're getting pretty good at it. We don't want to have to be, but we are. So as soon as we get the call and we know the rooms, we call right over and the custodians now have a room that they have to deep clean. And the difference between our normal cleaning at night, which includes cleaning, disinfecting, they go around and sanitize all the highly touched surfaces, bathrooms, of course, desks. But when they do a deep clean, if for example, it was a room, um, for kindergarten, we know that there's a lot of little toys in kindergarten and PlayStations and, so when they have to do a deep clean of a room like that, they wash every little toy and disinfect it. So that's, that's very time consuming. So, um, they don't ever complain, they go right into those rooms knowing that maybe somebody had been in there that, um, may have a positive test and they've come in on the weekends and they've really done an outstanding job. So I can't thank them enough. And maintenance as well, who have been, um, really working hard to make sure that they have the materials, make sure they have the equipment to do the job. And of course, they're out there doing, making sure all the buildings are safe and now they are transitioning to, um, watching temperatures in schools because we're getting to, getting into the freezing weather and we want to make sure we don't have any burst pipes and we want to make sure all our heating systems are working properly. So they're tracking the heat, they can do that remotely and they obviously go into the schools. We did have an issue Sunday with the heating system at East Derry and those parents received a letter that it was possible we may not make it into school on Monday, but thank you to, um, Bill and Mary Ann and, and Jeremy Lamoth and our maintenance team who, um, were able to get the units up and running so that students could still have school on Monday. That was, that was really, really important and, um, they made that happen. So we want to make sure we thank them. As far as finance, uh, we did have one of our auditors at our building on Friday, working with our accountant, Bill Roy. And we should be pretty much completing our 1920 audit, which seems sort of late because usually we're done with them in September, but, um, because of COVID, our auditors are all working remote as well. So it's just taking a little bit more time, uh, for us and them to complete the audit. The 1819 is complete and we've ordered hardbound copies, so I'll bring those to the board at the next meeting in January. Also, I mentioned, I mentioned, uh, well, I've been mentioning at the budget meetings that there were additional funds from the state that we could apply for. As you know, we had CARES money that the district was allocated, about $354,000 and that was to go towards any expenses that you might have incurred for due to COVID. And then there was a, um, supplemental public school response fund, which they call number one, because there were two of them. And in that one, um, all of the districts received $200 per student. So, and they used the October 1 of last year numbers for enrollment. So, um, the Derry School District for pre-K through A received, um, almost six received almost $600,000 as that funding source. There was also an opportunity to apply for additional school response funds because there was a $10 million pool that was left at the state that they were, they opened up to the schools and you had to write a grant for any expenses related to COVID that would occur prior to December 30th of 2020. And the application had to be in on December 1st. So we went through all of our expenditures since March because that was the timeline that you would use as a criteria, from March until December 30th. And the additional cost after allocating funds to CARES Act and the response fund number one, Derry pre-K through eight applied for an additional $1.3 million in additional funding. And the awards for the grant came out late this afternoon. So we just got it before I came to the board meeting. And Derry received, they, because of the amount that the districts applied for, everybody received 67.51% of what they requested. We requested 1.5 million because that included, it included $265,000 for Pinkerton. And the awarded amount for this particular grant was $1,073,389. So if we were to use that same formula of that $1,073, if the Pinkerton portion was given at 67%, then about 177 of that $1,073 would go to Pinkerton. So by doing this grant and applying for it, we, the district just received $900,000 to go towards their COVID, our COVID cost. This grant happened to have restrictions in that you had to spend it by December 30th. So we couldn't, Cliff and I worked on this. We kept, got a little confusing at times. But you couldn't put in to get reimbursed for anything that was already in your budget, that you had budgeted. So Cliff had Chromebooks that were budgeted and we couldn't put in for reimbursement for those. You also couldn't put in for Chromebooks that, there were some that Cliff ordered that we still haven't received, as we know. So those aren't coming until January. So I couldn't put in a request for those. So, but everything else that we've had for COVID, it could have been PPE, the Plexiglas, the tents, the air purifiers, staffing for the remote program, everything that we've had since March, we put in and applied for. So we're very happy that we received 900,000. And I want to thank Patty Doyle. She helped work on this. And our staff accountant, Bill Roy, also worked on this grant. So I want to thank them for bringing in those additional funds. And we were hoping that there'll be another pool of money in the spring that we can put forward any additional costs that we have after January 1. But I think they're actually sending out the payments, processing payments now. So we should receive it by the end of the week.
And Jane, I just want to take a minute to really thank you at this point on behalf of the entire school district. You know, your details that you keep and your attention to detail is amazing. Your work ethic and certainly your support with Cliff and Patty and Bill, but most importantly, your leadership and that work ethic. I know you worked until the final minute on that to get our district and Pinkerton Academy the money we deserved. So thank you publicly for that. I know it was a ton of work in addition to what you already have. And without that work and without meeting that deadline, we would not have received that grant. So thank you on behalf of all of us and really on behalf of the entire district and the entire community.
So with those funds, that does still put us of, we do still have almost $400,000 worth of expenses that we've had that aren't covered by any funding. So as of January 1, we go into January still with unfunded expenditures. So, and I think that that was some of the concerns when we talked about the remote learning plan, that we already know we're going in with unfunded programs and additional staffing and things like that. So we're obviously keeping an eye on it. And any further grants that would come our way, we will continue to apply for them. And we will continue to be fiscally wise and manage the budget that we're doing right now. And I think that's it.
I think I just will say on behalf of, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think they'll concur in following Mary Ann's comments. I appreciate your intuitiveness in knowing when to, what to retract from what grant and what money that could be awarded and maneuvering it to a different pile and making the best of the situation. So thank you very much. And I guess on behalf of that other $400,000 that were short, I'll bring a hat tomorrow to the town meeting and we'll pass it around and see if we can collect, so.
Jane, I think I remember in the spring, we had to vote to accept the CARES Act money. Do we have to do that with the state money? Was that only a federal thing we had to do or?
I don't think we have to accept funds one and two. But we can certainly do that if you want me to get the exact.
Maybe just check with someone.
I'll check with Gordon and we can accept it at the next board meeting. Okay.
I think that had to be, at least the federal one had to be done in a public hearing format.
That one did.
Which is just cut and dry, but just want to make sure we do the right protocol to accept the money, so.
Sure.
I would just reiterate what Lynn said. I know we probably all feel the same way, but it can't be said enough. This has been a very difficult year with a lot of things we've had to struggle with. And getting that kind of funding at the end of the year is a really nice Christmas present going into a very difficult funding season just to know that all the things we've done to help students and offer them is now covered. And we have a little less to worry about. We still have things to worry about. But that was a really, that was a lot of work that was, that really, we all appreciate hugely.
Okay, next is the assistant superintendent update. If Chris is still out there.
I am.
All right.
All right, you can all hear me? Good to go? All right, on November 3rd, all district staff participated in suicide prevention education training provided by Connors Clime Foundation. Candace Porter and Cara Lamarche of Connors Clime Foundation presented a workshop entitled Signs of Suicide: Training Trusted Adults. Despite a few technical glitches, the workshop was very well done and provided a comprehensive learning experience to assist our staff in understanding how to better recognize some of the signs demonstrated by youth struggling with thoughts of suicide, as well as how to engage and support them. Moreover, the workshop focused on our individual responsibility to notify and support students under RSA 193J Suicide Prevention. So that workshop, again, we had a few technical glitches, but the presenters, Candace and Cara, excellent job. It's a heavy topic, of course, but we had over 500 folks participating all at once. And it was well done and well received. The counselor team leaders and I have been working with Sue Sentner. I think most of you know Sue, the director of the Community Alliance for Teen Safety. And we're working with her to partner with CATS to utilize funds made available through the Governor's Youth Advisory Council. This was something that happened really quickly a few weeks ago. Sue called me and said, Chris, you know, we understand there's about a million dollars available, and I believe it's through CARES Act money, that, you know, available for grants through the Governor's Youth Advisory Council to really help to offset some of the negative impact of the pandemic with New Hampshire adolescents. And she said, can you give me some ideas? So, you know, I shot her some ideas and then reached out to our counselors who put together a list of ideas as well. We sent those over to Sue. Sue worked with her folks to get a grant in. And they were awarded, we assure, a specific amount or anything like that, but we're still working with them to develop a number of activities, which are being considered by Sue and the other folks from the state. But we're looking at getting something in the way of support for different activities that would focus on substance abuse and misuse, as well as anti-bullying and social emotional learning. And, you know, as I said, it was a very quick turnaround just to get some information and go back and forth. But it's also, the funds need to be spent by December 31st. We can purchase materials and curriculum and things like that. So we're looking at things like enhancing our existing second step curriculum that the counselors use, looking at anti-bullying. We're looking at perhaps having a guest speaker for perhaps middle school on substance abuse and misuse. And we're talking about some nationally known speakers. So there look to be some pretty good activities that we're working on now. And Megan Murtaugh and Jen Ayad are working with the counselors and working with Sue to coordinate those efforts moving forward. Transportation, so in an effort to improve compliance with all of the guidelines, first student will be doing some spot checks tomorrow morning and tomorrow afternoon to ensure that drivers are following pandemic safety standards and supporting students so that they too are following the guidelines. First student will be sending safety monitors and managers to our schools. They will be identified by the fact that they're wearing yellow vests or one will be wearing an orange vest. They will check in with the school offices. I have informed the principals and assistant principals. And what, they will not be boarding buses with students on those buses. But they will be looking to see as buses come in, are drivers wearing masks? Are students wearing masks? Looking to support our drivers and being able to make sure that they're directing students correctly with regard to wearing masks. They'll be looking for things like are students sitting in the front seat where they shouldn't be sitting? They'll be checking seating charts with the drivers after the students have disembarked. And they'll be looking to see, you know, details like are siblings seated together? Are kids appropriately distanced? They're really looking to improve upon our compliance with the standards that we set with our return to school plan initially and really make sure that we're providing the safest possible transportation for all of our students. So I would like to ask our families to revisit the rules with your children, specifically with regard to wearing masks and sitting in their assigned seats. We greatly appreciate all of your help in doing all that we can to keep our entire community safe and healthy. And lastly, with respect to us going to Plan C, any middle school students or Dairy Village students currently attending school onsite for face-to-face instruction, even though we've moved to Plan C in those schools, will also move to remote learning into Plan C with all other students the week of 1214 and will continue in remote learning through 1223. For any students recommended to return to school for face-to-face instruction in December, that's what we're looking at now, families will receive information directly from their school. So we are finalizing some plans, but we will be contacting families prior to the winter break. But just so you do know, for some students recommended by their teams, we are looking at resuming face-to-face instruction for some of those recommended students on January 4th, 2021. So you will receive direct notice from your school, whether it's from a special ed facilitator, a special ed teacher, a classroom teacher or an administrator. You'll get direct information. And we will have some other guidelines that we are going to put in place to further ensure the safety of our staff, as well as our students and their families, and trying to continue to maintain the safest and healthiest possible way that we can move forward and continue to provide face-to-face instruction for some of our students. And that is all. So thank you all very much. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions, folks? Yep. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Technology update, Dr. Dancy.
November was an extremely busy month in the technology department. On November the 10th, this group approved an additional purchase of Chromebooks, of 800 from Firefly Computing. And I put that order out on November 11th, even though we didn't have the PO yet. They received the PO on November 12th. We received those Chromebooks one week later on November 18th. And I would have some pictures that I want to share with you because it was quite amazing. Many people in this room, SAU administrators included, came over to Gilbert H. Hood and helped us unbox these. We received them on Wednesday afternoon at 11:30. My team processed about 200 on Wednesday afternoon. And then on Thursday morning, beginning at like 7 o'clock, the SAU team came over and began to help us. And by 12:30 that day, we had all 800 of these things processed and out to the schools so that they could be going home on Friday before the Thanksgiving break and when we had the remote learning days on the 23rd. I was so impressed with all of the help. You can see here, this was, it was a mess in there. And part of it involved cleaning up is one of the biggest tasks that we had here. So a big thank you to the SAU staff that came over and helped. The Gilbert Hood office staff did a lot of prep work before that day. They went ahead and got the bags ready, all the forms that were sent out to all the schools. The administrators in all the schools got them signed before they got the devices so it would go quicker. And my amazing technology crew that just really hammered down that day. And I mean, we were a machine. It was really fun to watch that happen. So I have the best crew. I just, you know, you've heard a lot of accolades tonight, but my technology crew is amazing and you won't find any better anywhere else in the state of New Hampshire. So anyway, we are still waiting on 427 devices from our original order. I think they're still on that slow boat from China. But we are anticipating, the earliest estimate date is January 8th, that they might come in. I'm not holding my breath for that one, but that's what I've been told is January 8th. Those devices are the ones that for our remote learning students who are currently using older MacBooks and IMAX, the desktop machines, that's when we'll hopefully be able to make the exchange for those students. I apologize that we couldn't do it out of the 800, but those were dedicated to the K through 2 students that were in face-to-face learning that needed them for remote learning. And we are so glad that they have a device now. So that's where we are with that. I did want to say something about what, to clarify a little bit what Jane was talking about. I budgeted for 550 devices this year. We received 1,027 this year. So the difference between 1,000 and 27 and the 550 that I budgeted for was able to be covered in the grant funding that she applied for. So we have a lot of these devices being paid for out of that surplus fund. I would like to do a little follow-up. As you know, one of the devices that we did receive had a horrific accident, for lack of a better term. I have been in contact with Firefly Computers, who sold us the devices. I've also been in contact with HP directly. And I want to read the letter that was sent to me from Firefly. "As we discussed over the phone, the alarming situation experienced with that device is not a known issue recognized by HP. As far as Firefly is aware, this is a first for us when it comes to complete units combusting into flames. And we want to apologize for this frightening experience. If there's anything else you need, please do not hesitate to ask. Thank you for your time, Mike Tischler." They've sold over 50,000 of these devices. And like I said, this is the only time they've ever heard of anything like that. HP has promised a replacement for that device. I have sent that device to their labs. They're doing a full investigation as to why or what made this device do what it did. So I just wanted to follow up with the board with what I know. They will be providing me a full written report whenever it becomes available. And I'll share that with the board when it comes. The last thing I would like to share with you tonight. to share with you tonight are some more pictures. And this is due to our fiber installation, which I am so excited about. For the past couple of weeks, First Light and their teams have been stretching fiber throughout the district and they all come into Gilbert H. Hood, which is our hub. And that's what you see right there on the, the left side. That's all of the fibers from all the different schools coming into, into Gilbert H. Hood. Our team has been learning an awful lot about fiber and dark fiber. And just so you know, dark fiber doesn't mean it's part of the dark side of the force. It means that First Light can't see into our network because we manage it instead of them being able to manage it. We pay less for that. So it helps us in the long run and we can have up to 10 gigabits of information trafficking through this dark fiber network. On the right side, you'll see the two new devices, the purple one on the top, which is receiving all of those fibers. And then the one down at the bottom, the white one, was installed yesterday. That's for our new 2 gigabyte internet connection. That's, you need to know, we have 200 megabytes currently in the district. And I, I wanted, that reminds me of some of the conversation we had earlier, if you recall back in July, that meeting that we stayed here till midnight. One of the, one of the requests was for synchronous learning. And at that time, I said, we don't have the bandwidth in order to accommodate that. And if these teachers were still here, they would agree with me that this past month or two has been very painful with the bandwidth that we have. By going one-to-one with only 200 megabytes, especially in this school, they've really, it's been, it's been a very arduous process. So we are multiplying that times 10 and we are hoping that by next week, we're flipping the switch and we're running on 2 gigabytes of internet speed throughout all of the, all of the schools here in town. That will free up our ELAN so it won't get overloaded and that will make East Derry also work a little bit faster. They're not on our network, but their wireless is controlled in our network. And when we get overloaded here, they get overloaded there. So everybody should be doing well by the time we come back on, in January for face-to-face learning. If we do need to do synchronous, there shouldn't be an issue there with the bandwidth. So I'm really excited about the things that are happening in technology. We're making leaps and bounds forward and your support is always appreciated. That's, I think that's my last slide. I don't have any more pictures. Any questions?
Just to compliment Cliff, I like your diligence on all this and I appreciate your following up. And I like the enthusiasm too, this, the technology and all the struggles related to it throughout the district. Three, four years talking about it and it's, it is nice to see it all coming together. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Cliff, your entire team certainly is mentioned within the staff. But, you know, that day at Gilbert H. Hood was kind of mimicking that Saturday. We were out in, you know, the rain and delivering Chromebooks to people, but it was done methodically and quickly and to say it was fun.
It was.
Again, it's reminiscent of, I believe, who we are in Derry and that's a team. It's a, it's a well-functioning team and it's a collaborative team and it's a fun team. You know, and again, on behalf of students and families, that's what we do and we do it with pride and we do it with, with love in our hearts for kids. And you can see that and that's who we are. So I'm proud of that. So thank you very much, Cliff.
Thank you.
Nice pictures.
Thank you, Dr. Dancy. Okay, committees manifest approval.
Sir, I make a motion to approve the manifest in the total of $4,875,252.41, of which general payroll is $3,602,798.88 and general expense is $1,273,172.53. That is, the motion calls for a second, please.
I will second.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Motion by Lynn, second by Nick, outer space. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye, it's mute button.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Any other committee updates?
I'll just go on to again promote the legislative, joint legislative meeting that we're going to have tomorrow night. It's a good collaboration with the town. It meets with our senator and our state representatives, newly, newly elected state representatives. Gives an opportunity to, to paint a better light of clarity of what the district and the town needs. We, and make sure that the folks that work for us in Concord continue to advocate in the right direction. So looking forward to that meeting. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that meeting. So anyway, it'll be, it is posted on the web, both in the town hall, the municipality and the school district. And there's an opportunity for people to chime in remotely and watch the, the collaboration there. So anyway, that's about it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, FYI, we have the December 1 enrollment report and we have the flyer for free and reduced price meal applications. Okay, and delegations and individuals? Don't all rush the mic at once. Take your turn, please. Okay, any other business? All right, I would remind everyone, we have a, hopefully our final fiscal advisory committee meeting Monday night where Pinkerton will be there to discuss their budget. And I hope they'll put that to bed for the year. And the rest of you, we'll see you in January at an next board meeting, which is January 5th. And I'll take a motion for adjourn.
So moved.
Good evening, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.